Are you ready?
I was born ready.
Yeah, it was. I didn't want to go.
Cue it up.
Frank, hit it.
All right, I guess we're ready to go. So, I would welcome all of you who are here and those watching to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for August 22nd, 2024. If you would stand with me, please, with a flange and cover, would you lead us?
I would lead you since to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You seated?
Is that what they call this meeting?
Okay, first of all, I guess I'd like to open up the floor for any public comment or publication also this evening. But first of all, we will open the floor to any public comment. If you would wish to introduce the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and what you have to say.
I just wanted you to pick me to, sir. Good evening. Carl on that, Kirby vacuum. This is not on touch, uh, little touch pad.
Come ahead. You're getting picked up on the camera.
Okay, there is no touch pad.
Sometimes you gotta go like this.
Yes.
There you go.
So, I'm here on behalf of the Bid... Oh, yes, I'm on that. I'm here on behalf of the Bid. We had a very successful jazz festival. Weather was perfect, big crowds. And I just came to thank the village, the workers. They did fantastic. We could not do that event without them. They were tremendous help. And also, the lights that you guys... Not you, but the village workers left on Main Street and the ones down the alley, it looks so good at night. I get all sorts of people telling me. So, please, leave the lights up if they look great. Makes the village look fantastic. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your help for the Bid events. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Elena.
I'm leaving you too.
Yes, the jazz festival was, I think, extremely successful and well-will intended.
All right, sure.
And actually, Friday night really wasn't on the bet. We did, we were a little in front of some of the outdoor, but all the venues had their...
All day, yeah.
Okay, I don't see anyone else who wishes to address the board, so at this time, I would close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we have this evening a presentation by the Bid President, Elena Nardi. And Elena, if you would come on up to the podium and...
She's just gonna come over here and... I think the presentation is kind of...
Oh, usually.
We're gonna do it together.
Yeah.
Oh. Team.
Yes, yes. So, we sort of had a couple discussions with Mayor Byers. And we thought that it wouldn't be a really great idea if Karen, with her really great skill set, took over a little bit of the work from the Bid in terms of social media and website and things like that. And we did talk to Don last time, I did. And he said legally, it's okay. I know it would definitely decrease confusion and put the same messages out. And Karen's already doing the ads anyway. So, I asked Elena to come in, and she wrote this up. And we wrote this up.
She's absolutely right. We can't, the Bid really can't function without the village. Everything we do is for the village and to benefit the village. And without your guys at our events, they wouldn't happen. You know, the Bid by design really is just... It's a great concept, but we don't have paid staff. And all of the people are running their own businesses. It's really hard to get buy-in and to get any kind of consistency, which is really what we need. And so Karen is just amazing at everything she does. So, we were hoping that, you know, if she could take on this part. And, you know, we're certainly not intending to dump a ton of work on her, but really just to see if she can help us with this marketing and website update, because, you know, she does it for you guys anyway. It's really the same content work.
So, then just taking that and posting it to their sites as well and sending out emails for the Bid meetings and pretty much making ads and any flyers. And that should be the extent of it. We thought sometimes there might not be much work at all. But just random updates in Facebook, so it shouldn't be too bad. And then other times, it may be busier. Right now, we're guessing about one to two hours per week. But I spoke to Karen, and I said, you know, take note of what you think, how many hours you feel you're working, and then we can kind of have a discussion moving forward. But we just wanted to make sure it was okay with you, and I did. And I don't know if we need something, a resolution, but I've done. I mean, probably would make sense, but...
Good. I'd be very happy to be there. She is, she is just so good. I mean, she's even out, out. Do you see them?
Yep.
I mean, she's just wonderful. I mean, I was so excited just to have her come into our village, so yes.
I agree.
Well, legally, the Bid was established by the village.
Yes.
It is technically part of village government. So, for her to do work for the Bid, it's really doing work for the village. It's the same thing.
Good.
Yeah.
He has old age.
So, Karen, if Karen feels she has enough time to take it on, she's definitely good at that kind of stuff.
Oh, my gosh, she's great.
Just look at what she's put out for the village since she's been on board.
And since she's not the Deputy Treasurer, I had taken on that whole... I sort of added, and we talked about this when we hired her. I added it in social media, took out Deputy Treasurer. So, but she's also a workhorse. So, I have to, sometimes, we talk on the weekends constantly about things. So, I just, I said, make sure you're being upfront, you know, with me if you're feeling overwhelmed, and we might need to reassess other things. But at this time, it don't indicate it being much more work than you are. Because she's already creating the ads anyway. And sometimes, because, you know, the Bid might not...
You said yes.
You said yes.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry, yes.
They're in regular working hours, right?
Yes.
Let me ask you about the nuts and bolts of this. It says your assistance with mail, chimp, and bulk emails, website, content. Is there anything that would... That would come back out of those things back to the village? Or will there be, other than setting it up so that Elena could read it, or someone else would be looking at these things and responding to them? I'm not at all interested in the village responding to these.
No.
Other than how they're doing something around it.
Right. I think Karen's role would be more of the sending it out. All the responses would come back to our info@websterbid.com that we man, and we're still gonna man that. It's really just, you know, so many times, we'll have an event, and the time on the website is different than the time that you guys know. And it's just so...
It's bench, so...
Yes, yeah. So, we definitely don't need to overwork her or anything, or, you know, make her take on being a Bid member. It's really just to get the content out there correctly.
And sending out meeting notices, those reminders, those kind...
Well, we need to...
Pretty much everything Lisa was doing.
Right.
We need to, yes.
She would take that, so...
Yes, we tried.
I know, I know.
They're all part-time, you know, it's all volunteer, so...
I think it's a great idea.
Nothing would change, too. We would still be submitting the information to Elena for approval, or Tom, or whatever, so... I'll still be going to the events. That won't change. This has nothing to do with that. This is just our part, kind of reason.
So, you are estimating like basically two hours, three hours, or...
I don't even think it'll take that sometimes, some weeks.
Once things are set up.
Yeah.
Elena will be providing information through the...
Yes. In my imagination, the process is gonna work. You know, Karen and I are gonna communicate. For example, this week, we have a concert on Friday. I would be saying, please send out a reminder, and she's probably gonna say, "Oh, yeah." But, you know, it would be that kind of thing. You know, like, let's look ahead for the next month and see what we should do. You know, like, right now, she's working on the census, the village census, which is something the Bid really needs to do and get out something to them. So, I think a lot of the work is kind of a duplication. You guys do it anyway. We just need it, but we don't have anybody to do it. So, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a big drain on her. And anytime it is, you just say, like, back off.
Well, and I was doing the census before, but now we at least know, we weren't kind of sure of our goal, so we didn't want to overstep. Now that we know that we are gonna, it's okay for us in doing these things, it'll just be a little bit more clearer.
Now you're gonna call it like a bad car dealership. Now you're overselling to me.
Here it is.
We said yes.
Yes. Well, thanks, guys.
All right.
Yeah, me too.
Well, Daryl did say yes, yeah.
I am petrified of it. Now saying yes, and we'll be looking at the time commitment over the next, you know, month, two months, three months.
Six months, eighteen years.
At the end of the year, and then make, you know, not make the decision at that point. You know, I will look on the hotmail team over the...
So, she should keep a record of her time work on the Bid.
Oh, she, that's fair. Karen, there's more than fair. Karen, absolutely.
I don't, I don't see the harm in doing this. I see the benefits of it, because I'm struggling with both coordinating and having, having this big, so, yeah.
Well, thank you. We promise to be respectful of her time.
We'll be about it, I believe.
I don't think we're worried about it.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Elena. Thanks, guys.
And the three of us already said yes. We didn't even need Daryl to say it.
Yeah, so we're for it. Too bad, yes.
I said, however, it will be a little bit of study while...
No, that's good.
...go on.
Thank you.
That's good. Dana, Dana driven, making a decision by Dana.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Elena.
Thank you. I'm going to the chamber of breakfast.
Oh, if you didn't hear us, we said yes.
What was that?
Just wanted to make sure of your concerns.
I then, oh, the red one? That's a curve. That's on the house. You dropped it off earlier.
It is blue.
Well, and we'll take a look at that. I have no objection to that. And if Karen do some of that, you're gonna great job for us.
Yep. I'm very happy to be there.
The role of Deputy Treasurer. Okay, we will move then to regular board business. And the first item we have is the approval of minutes from August 8th, 2024. Not very long.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Nancy?
Aye.
Trusty Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have the resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to go through them today. And I did not find anything that... Some of the, some of the ordinary.
All I wanted to ask, and he's not here, but on ultra rental and supply, what is a web sling and a flat eye?
You've seen my trouble when I was trying to determine, determine the laws bill. No idea. You want me to ask him?
What was that? A red sling?
We'll send you an email. Is that, is that okay?
Red sling comes first, then the flat eye as well.
A web sling, no. No, dear. And strap recovery HD. I had just no idea what any of that meant.
Okay, you answered that.
And it was a red one.
How about a heavy-duty hole cut?
That was essential.
Oh, that is all right.
The LMP technology solutions in 23, 23th century. Is that unusual, or...
That's what it is, but I will have something soon for you because it's about to skyrocket, and we just can't afford it anymore. And I don't want to work with them. So, they're great, but they just don't have municipalities. So, anyway, I'll bring that up. I've sent the contract over to Don for entering the system. Again, sorry. But we're a little worried. They want us to replace every single computer, pay $10,000 to switch to the Microsoft Cloud, even though we chose to go with their cloud, as they recommended.
So, what's their reasoning for it?
Well, they said that the new, so no, this new system cannot tolerate Windows 10, whatever the most recent ones. So, all, we've been, we're on a schedule. We're always replacing computers as needed. It's, it will cost us $10,000 to switch to the Microsoft.
Well, let me ask you, too, because I saw, Don, you had a question, and you have that.
Yes, and I'm getting more information from Smith about that.
Okay, why get...
Which had to be covered in the morning, but they were trying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
During the 50 hours with...
Yeah, if they, if they're negligent, and somehow the whole computer systems of the village crashes, or you have some kind of data breach, and it's their fault because they forgot to do something, they owe you 250 bucks. That's it.
Yeah, you're stuck.
So, that's kind of... But their, but their solution is, go out and get your own insurance and cover that kind of stuff.
Which we do have it, but I need to know how much. But we're actually in the process of waiting for renewals with Smith right now.
I would agree that that should be something else, what they should do.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, I can see it taking change.
Their shtick is just not municipality talent. They have big companies that's not...
Okay, so, I have a motion to approve later.
I'll move that motion. Trusty Nancy?
Aye.
Trusty Alito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal or agreement with CME Associates for the Way of Order Treatment Plan. Anybody have questions on that?
I'm hoping I wondered that properly. Basically, the EFC would not reimburse us for this amount until this contract is signed. And you all already approved the bill at the last meeting?
Yeah.
But the EFC decided, we don't pay them until we get reimbursed from the EFC. So, they denied that one pending this agreement.
But anyway, there is a resolution on the board to authorize it itself to sign the proposal.
I'll make it.
I'll second it. Trusty Alito?
Um, aye.
Was that a yes, sir? Trusty Nancy? Trusty Lauer?
Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'd love those direct answers.
They are moving forward with the sewer project, the wastewater. And, see, I didn't have the opportunity to sit on their biweekly meeting. Listen, I have nothing to say about the technical stuff, but they are moving forward. And I did hear a lot about 2025, even January 2026. And I'm hoping that it can be... Some of the things that are happening, you're obviously carrying to next year and be finished. They're moving along. Okay. And last, we have a resolution to authorize a release of number two to Greenbrier Crossing Letter of Credit in the amount of 2,070, excuse me, 272,950 dollars and 14 cents. So, we're looking to authorize a court to notify the authority that our danger is serious.
Yeah.
Make sure you...
See all of the things that are included in this total amount of the date, and the log, there's still a lot left to do. You see a lot of zeros there, but they are moving.
Yes, Jake asked me to put it on there. He said, could you solve it?
Have the opportunity drive through the calendar.
Yeah.
On the two weeks ago. So, the resolution to have authorized the release of this amount of money.
I'll make it.
I'll second it. Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Nancy?
Aye.
Trusty Alito? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
At this time, we have a, just a public notification that a serial bond interest and principal payment for the bond obtained in 2012 will be made in the amount of $63,443.75 on or about September 12th, 2024. I guess little by little, moving towards the serial bonds being paid off. All right. At this point, Don, do you have anything for us?
Well... Jake, myself, and Chris, we've kind of been struggling. There's a section, the part of the zoning, oh, 17540, which is the site plan review, which was the new part that we put in about two years ago, or something like that. And it came, it came up with 60 Bear Drive. You know, the upper, the upper floor is being remodeled for a daycare center. It's already designed, temporary kind of size on the building. And the issue is whether they need to come in to the zoning board for site plan review. And the, Chris and Jake told them, yes, they do, based on the language of the statute. And I had a conversation with their attorney, and he sent me this email that I just got at 6 o'clock today. And it's, tell me what you think. So, the statute says, prior to issuing a building permit for the construction of a building or for the alteration of a building, if the area of any floor will be increased 25% thereby, or where two more parcels of land are to be combined into one parcel. And, and really, the confusion or the ambiguity is over that "and." Now it says, "And," prior to the issuance of a zoning permit or certificate of occupancy for a change of use or occupancy of land or a building, the building inspector shall refer the site plans of the parcel to the zoning board appeals for its review and approval. So, it's the second part, that "and." The 60 Bear Drive's owner and his attorney argued that it doesn't say "or," "or" prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. It says "and." And so, he said, his, his reading is that "and" should be like, "and" in conjunction with prior to the issue. So, in other words, that there has to be the construction of a building and the alteration of a building included before it goes to the ZDA for site plan review. Because like in, at 60 Bear Drive, they're not doing anything to the exterior of, the building's not changing.
I, I read that, how you, how I interpret that is they do not need to come here.
The same, the same thing is gonna come up because the same person bought Nestlings.
Yes, they did. Yes, yes.
And, and actually, the, the, there's an Emerald Financial that was in the second floor of 60 Bear Drive is planning to move down there. So, they're gonna, they're gonna do work inside that building, not do anything to the outside.
They just get their required permits.
But it is, it is a change of use. You know, it's going from a retail use to an office use. Do they have to come in for site plan review?
No, they fill out the application, they play the permit, they get their inspections, and, yeah, that's not site use.
Because otherwise, otherwise, the interpretation is is that every time a C of O needs to be issued, except for one in two family houses, it's gotta go to the zoning board.
I'll tell you, anywhere we do that, because we're tenants and we're landlords, I never have to do that.
Well, if you look at...
In, 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 here, we're...
If you look at the next parts of this, of the site plan review law, it's got everything that has to be submitted to the zoning board. And it's all the stuff that wouldn't even apply if, if it's just a single building. I don't think...
So, what happens, my question would be in terms of use, because there would be a change of use. If, well, we already have it. Music store is changing to a pizza parlor. That's a change of use, and I'm sure with the design, that's a change of use. Do they have their...
A change of use every time doesn't mean going from a pizza to an ice cream to a, sometimes change of use is retail, you know, commercial. So, it's not every, you sell burgers, and now you're going to a hot dog.
You're going to retail now.
But I think, but I think going from a music store to a pizza parlor is a change of use.
I would agree with this one.
So, and in fact, I, and Jake, you know, Jake's busy, so...
It's a restaurant.
He hasn't responded, but a week ago or so, I, in talking about this, I asked him the same thing. Did that have to go, to my knowledge, that didn't go in front of the zoning board. I don't know if they're doing any work over there yet, or if they've applied for a building permit.
Where?
Of pizza place.
Yeah, they do.
There, there's that.
Well, so I said, I said, at least you gotta be consistent. You know, treat everybody to say, so why are you making this guy come in for site plan review if they, if the pizza place didn't have to come in? Like, what's the difference?
The one you did have come in is actually doing more work. And the change of use is pretty different. Yeah, that does, doesn't sound like a process that makes sense for me. They're not, if they were gonna add on to that building at Barrett, you know...
No, the only thing, it's a daycare, so there will be a little fenced-in playground area.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
You get your permit for fence in the building.
But otherwise, it's, yeah. Well, the other thing with that is, they may need a special permit use because in every district, a nursery school, and this is another weird thing with the zoning code. Nursery school is not defined. Daycare center is defined. And, and the thing in the code, daycare centers are only allowed in the neighborhood business district. They're not allowed anywhere else as a permitted use. However, a nursery school is allowed in every district subject to getting a special use permit, which doesn't make much sense to me. You think if they allow nursery schools, they should all, you know, daycare centers are basically the same thing. daycare centers are basically the same thing. They should allow that. So based on that logic, I think they were told they got to go to the zoning board for the special use permit. But that's because, you know, anyone would, unless they're, because they're not in the neighborhood business, neighborhood business district, because it's not a permitted use. Except for a special use. But that's something in the future, you know, this board may want to consider amending the zoning code to allow daycare centers other, in other places other than the neighborhood business district. Makes sense.
It does.
There are differences in definition of daycare center versus nursery school.
Well, it's not defined in our code. Nursery school isn't defined in the code. Daycare center is defined and it refers to, to the state education law about it. I don't know if in the state education law, there's a definition of a nursery school. You don't see the term nursery school used that often anymore. It's all daycare centers have pre-K programs built into them. You know, I think if you just Google nursery school for the definition, it'll come back as some kind of structured program for toddlers.
Or for a church.
No, forget a church. It doesn't matter about church.
Actually, that's where other ones are. That's the only ones I've seen.
Well, that's.
No, we've got.
So I, but I will pass on, you know, my inclination is that the, the and is an and, it's not an or. So you don't have to do the site plan review to the zoning board if it's in conjunction with the alteration or construction of a building. Well, if you just look again, site plan isn't defined either, but if you just look up the definition of a site plan, a site plan is usually, you know, a whole plot of land, a parcel of land that shows the building on it. Shows parking and shows, you know, all sorts of stuff, you know? So what kind of site plan are you going to get for the old Jake and whatever bank building over there?
Yeah.
You know, you know, it's, it's been the same for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she even kept the same.
Yeah. I hope they keep the same. There's a million daycares in the house.
Well, I thought they were not the same.
They would never go to either.
They have a picture even.
They go with license. They have license.
They continually talk to Karen, you say, are they going to have a change?
It's just kind of a weird. What I used to go over.
Can I, you know, if they're going to change upstairs?
And I took out the little bed head.
Change.
They're keeping the second, I thought, constructing two apartments rather than one. Are they going to have apartments upstairs or the whole building?
Yeah, no, no. They were going to have apartments. That's what I was.
Change the one back to approved?
Well, they talked about two. I don't know whether they're going to do that right way, but that's, that was. Yeah, they, that was still going to be like housing. But Dale and I had.
I don't know. Jake would know, Jake would know the answer to that. I don't, I don't know that.
Well, right now, yeah, it's all Dale, it's all mine. But then she and I made a little tea area in the back. We asked the two buildings over there to set up some tables and stuff.
All right, I think we beat this one to death.
All right, I'll, I'll pass, I'll pass on your collected wisdom.
I like that, Josh.
There was something funny. You looked at the code.
Or no, just read the code, just like down Reddit makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, and we could just change it to say that and in conjunction therewith prior to the issuance. Then it's clear that.
More, yeah.
Where's the book? Go freaking pencil.
Do this.
Was that either?
But do something.
Nah, I'll just initial it. I'll just initial it.
Then we could do it in conjunction with changing the daycare part of the students.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause who knows? There, there's, there could be in-home daycare throughout the village in New York, you know?
There is. There is.
Sure there is and they gotta be sort of permitted by the, but technically they're not allowed.
Yeah.
Without getting this special permit used.
Is that coming?
No. We got to change it. All right, moving on Heather.
Got it. I have nothing.
Jake? Oh.
You know what this is? The last board meeting. My golden fourth, you know, you're supposed to give a report.
Oh, I guess Jake's still, he, he will be coming soon.
What's his name?
What's his name? You don't even know who you hired? You vote, you're voting for him? I forgot.
N R.
Steenmark.
Chris Town.
Yes, it's Chris.
But Chris McKay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Christopher K R I S T O P A G R T A L L O N Town.
All right. Thank you.
He'll be walking around the building tomorrow closing all the P Ks.
They're all over.
I know they are.
Sounds like he's still, from what I hear, he sounds like he's doing.
Yeah, he's spending a lot of time, you know, prior to.
Oh my gosh, it's terrible. I mean, we didn't know how bad. We really didn't know how bad.
Okay, um, before our next meeting, actually, on September tenth, which is our next meeting, uh, on that two, Wednesday, prior to our meeting, uh, it is September eleventh.
Yes.
And, um, there will be a ceremony again this year down at Veterans Park that will begin at six o'clock. So encourage you to come out.
Good night.
And, um, remember that date, September eleventh. Okay. Uh, anyone else? None? Uh, last promotion to adjourn?
I will accept that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
You guys are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leaving home. Thank you for watching.
Please come again.